Committees.
And student support.
And student support, yeah, so.
We had meetings of resource and school buildings and we held them back to back last week. I lost my note that were sent to me, but Craig went over budget and all. Also what was taking place with buildings, maybe that anybody on the committees can fill in.
Anyone?
Nothing new to report.
Policy Committee, Mr. Horgan.
Nothing new to report.
Could I just add on, yeah, on the building something, I mean, I think. You know, the key piece was just hearing about the process of how the HVAC evaluations of all the buildings are going, so. So that was really helpful. Craig Schall, who shared a lot of really pertinent, important information, so just so that people know that that made up a bulk of what we were talking about.
Any comments? Thank you, Ms. Pierce, LaBelle Pierce. So, Mr. Horgan, did you, did you report that there is nothing to report?
Correct, sir, nothing new.
Thank you. Student Support Committee, that would be Ms. LaBelle Pierce.
Thanks, yeah, we met last week as well and we just got a sense of what some of the processes are for plans to have orientations for kids and. So that parents and students kind of know what they're gonna be. You know, what everything's gonna look like and a lot of that is gonna, you know, hinge on the negotiations, so we didn't have a lot of details about that, only just that we know buildings are, each. Building administrative team is working on it, we got an update from athletics and we're gonna hear that full report. From Mr. Antassi tonight and then we got a lot of information about how. You know, new materials that the schools are getting and right now, all across the state, all across the country, teachers are learning a ton of new things and. The district brought a lot of really good programs to expand connections to kids as they're doing synchronous and asynchronous learning. So, things like iReady and Sora and Raz Kids and there's new parent outreach that. The technical department is working on to create a new service help desk, so that'll be good, that'll be helpful and they're working on a video series of helpful tutorials. And they know they wanted to really strengthen that technology hotline, I think that's gonna be really an important piece of the remote phase. And then the other cool thing that they've purchased is a telehealth system so that. They can make connections for students for health concerns and mental health concerns. And, yeah, so we got a lot of updates about what's happening for special education and IEP plans. Making sure that, you know, when kids start, even in remote, they're ready to really kind of deal with those needs, so it was a good meeting.
Any comments or questions?
One comment, Mr. Mayor. My granddaughter's going to be a freshman at Pittsburgh High School this year and I spent some time with her yesterday and. Her guidance counselor reached out to her and went over her schedule and all the information and she was very happy and very pleased. To know what her schedule is and who her guidance counselor is and who she can find. They're doing a nice job.
Great.
Real support.
Thank you, any further questions or comments?
Hi, Rosemary here. At what point do the teacher, do the parents of students know who their teachers will be?
Mr. Thompson?
Tom? Yep, so we are getting ready to send out information beginning tomorrow. So, students will start receiving information on next year. Either by email from schools or by hard copy mail sent to the home, so information will begin coming out tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
Any further questions? Executive Committee, nothing to report on that. And we don't, we don't have student reps tonight, correct?
Right.
Right, okay. Public comment, anyone wishing, do we have anyone in the queue, Mr. Superintendent? And if we do, no more than three minutes in length. Is anyone wishing to speak as a member of the public?
I'm not aware of anybody who has requested to speak.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the superintendent's report, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, this evening, we have a few items to go over, one is to update the community on reopening. The second item is the English Language Learners, really progress update on how we performed last year and really, more importantly, how our students performed last year. Craig Antassi, our Athletics Director is with us and lastly, we'll just over a. Formal vote that the school committee needs to take as part of the CROCR MSBA project. So, to start off, I'd like to update the school committee with. What's going on with our reopening, so I'm gonna try to get my screen to share here, so bear with me. If you can just give me a thumbs up that you can. See the, our point, great, thank you, Eva. So, as we've been looking at all the factors involved in reopening schools, tonight, we are announcing a slight modification to the school schedule. So, the day that school starts for remote learning of September fourteenth remains the same. We will begin testing for special education and English Language Learners as soon as we can schedule that individually at each of our schools. The next item is really when these learning will start for our students in substantially, substantially separate classes in the hybrid. That date is now October fifth, originally, that date was September twenty eighth. So, that's one of the changes, the second change or update is the date of the start of our hybrid learning model. Originally, that date was October fifteenth and now we plan to start the hybrid model on November second. The start times for each of the school grade levels are listed below, for elementary and middle schools, it'll be eight thirty AM to two fifty PM in the afternoon. Pittsburgh High will start a little bit later than normal at eight thirty AM and end the day at three fifteen. And Goodrich Academy will follow its schedule of twelve fifteen to seven fifteen.
Mr. Jokula, just one correction, sorry, the Pittsburgh High School, it's not ending at three fifteen, it's ending at three oh five.
Okay, we will make that change before we go to print, thank you, John.
Yep.
So, we will be sharing this by way of social media and our website after we make that small change to the. Correct the information and share that out with the community. Any comments, questions?
I, I just want to say, can you hear me, Dan, can you hear me?
Yeah.
My, I'm seeing on the screen, everything's in Spanish.
Yes, that's the Spanish version of what I just went over, so I was just sharing that with the community.
Okay, thank you.
Bob, this is Jim, so the October fifth and November second dates definite?
They are firm, we have agreements with the, with our FEA, Teachers Unions and other unions on, on these dates, so these dates are in agreement.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other further questions or comments, I'd like to. Some good news, over the last year, our English Language Learning Team. Worked digital diligently and focused on our students who are learning English across the district. And tonight, Eva Kelly will be providing an update using the access data, which we compared to the access data from, from the prior year. So, without giving away the story, I turned, turned the mic and the video over to Eva.
Okay, well, thank you, thanks for having me, I'm gonna try sharing my screen also. This one. Let me share and I just want to see if I can make it really big so you can. Can you see it? Can you see it?
Yeah.
Very good.
Okay, all right, so. As Bob said, I'm sharing out tonight with you the English Language Learner Progress Update based on the access testing that was done in January, right before, January, February, right before we went. To the closure of schools, but it's great news, I, some of you might be wondering what is access in light of the fact that we don't have any MCAS scores this year because no one was tested. Do, again, to the closure, we do have access store scores, all our English Language Learners participate in access scoring. It's an English Language Proficiency Assessment. It's for students in grades K through twelve and we administer it every year to help us to monitor English Language Development of the students and identify English Language Learners. What it stands for is Assessing Comprehension Communication, I have to move that, in English, state to state. So, any state that participates with WIDA, which we do, Massachusetts does, has access to these scores and they become a part of our accountability data with the state. Do you guys have any questions? Okay, I'm gonna keep going, so, before I tell you about all the wonderful progress, I was brainstorming with Mr. Jokula today about. You know, how this, how, what went into causing these great results for our students and over the past year, as you know, there's been a huge focus on equity. For our students, there's been a lot of changes in leadership. The English Language Learner Department has really adopted a team approach with teachers, adding teachers on special assignment to support classroom teachers. Other classroom teachers, increased the number of ESL teachers, we added three last year and also, we worked hard last year to increase parent outreach and engagement of these families. So, that's Becky, of course, you know, Elizabeth Mackey, who's now retired, but did the bulk of this work. So, I'd like to also talk to you about the number of students we have in the district that are English Language Learners. So, as you can see in this data is from the Department of Education, over the past five years, you can see that we are seeing increases in. The number of English Language Learners coming into the district and right now, we have two hundred and thirty eight. Kindergarteners enrolled to start on the fourteenth and ninety six of them or forty percent are English Language Learners. Questions, just, okay. So, now I'm gonna delve deeply into the access scores and results and I have a comparison here between two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty. So, I'm just struggling because I can see your faces, so I'm trying to move you guys around so I can talk, all right, I, I have you guys off, so if you have to say something to me, you have to say it because I can't see anyone anymore. So, two thousand nineteen, twenty, I'm right here, we're comparing, this is district-wide data, I'm comparing the percentage of students that made progress. In two thousand nineteen, that percentage was twenty five percent, last year, we made fifty two percent of our students made some progress on their access scores. In two thousand nineteen, twenty one percent of the students actually met their target for access testing, they have a target improvement, just like in MCAS. Testing and in two, and that was twenty one percent in two thousand nineteen, in two thousand twenty, we jumped to thirty five percent as a district number. And finally, one other point I wanted to share with you is the FLAP eligible, so these students score. High enough to be considered to exit the program and continue as a monitored student for a number of years, four years until. We're confident that they are ready to go without that, any support at all from the ESL department. In two thousand nineteen, that number, the percentage was eight percent and then in two thousand twenty, it jumps to fourteen percent, almost doubled. Then I broke out the data by school.
Excuse me, Eva?
Yeah, yeah.
Could you tell me what FLAP stands for?
So, FLAP, formerly English, Limited English Proficiency.
Thank you.
So, then, when they test out of access and score high enough and have achieved a certain level of English proficiency, they're considered FLAP. Does that make sense? Yeah?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Okay, okay. Then I broke out a year-by-year comparison for each. Data point by school and you see, we made improvements across the board, the green is our two thousand twenty percent progress, the number of students who made progress on the access testing. Isn't that great? I don't hear any.
Because we're all muted. That's why.
Next, I'm gonna share how many students actually met their progress target for access and as you can see, the comparison across the schools. Huge improvements in two thousand twenty compared to two thousand nineteen.
Eva, what, what, what changed?
Okay, so.
Nineteen to twenty twenty.
So, I think some of the things Mr. Jokula and I talked about today was, you know, there was a lot of change in leadership in the district that the central office level as well as at the school. Also. We added three ESL teachers to further support the teachers already working with these students. And we also had a teacher on special assignment that was going in and supporting teachers, helping them with strategies and talking to general ed teachers about strategies to support these students in the general ed classroom as well.
These are really impressive jumps, wow.
They're amazing, I know, plus the parent outreach, don't forget that.
Oh, yeah, good, good job, yep.
So, the next, the next slide is, again, the number of students that scored high enough to be considered no longer needing services and are just going to be monitored for a number, for four years. That percentage, as you can see, went up at every single school and Memorial really knocked it out of the park, those kids really did well last year. And for goals for next year, we're gonna continue our focus on equity and student growth, to support student growth. Enhance, again, our parent engagement opportunities and really trying to reach out to community groups that these parents are comfortable with, so we can engage them more in. Education and the schools and also, you know, continue the support of our teachers to meet the student needs. So, I don't know if John wants to add anything.
Excuse me, but did anybody else lose their Zoom pictures?
No.
Oh, I have only the word Zoom on here, okay. I still have the voice, but I have no picture, okay.
So, I, I didn't know if anyone in. In, on, not the school committee had questions, you guys have questions or if Bob or John or Adam, anyone wanted to add anything to the presentation?
I think just some context, Eva, last summer, you know, when Becky Mackey are now retired, ELL Director joined.
Steph, can you turn it down a little bit?
We, we looked at the MCAS data in the school, really looked where we really needed to focus and what the needs of the students were and. You know, Becky and Eva and as Eva mentioned, you know, we designed, we found some teachers who are willing to go on special assignment. And get into the schools and work with the ELL staff, also having three more teachers, a little bit of improvement in our progress as well. So, it was really a little bit of everything that contributed to the positive results that Eva just shared and now, I think, the challenge for us. Whatever learning environment or how many learning environments we're gonna, going to encounter this year, the goal is to continue the growth and the parental engagement. With which all, you know, it's, they're all pieces of the puzzle that we're pulling together and, you know, Eva mentioned, you know, one school, Memorial, you know, that was a school that. You know, was designated a school, you know, in, in restructuring that received some special funding too, so, again, it's, it's, it's a. Full team approach and focus on, on helping our students, I don't know, John or Adam, if you wanna add anything?
No, I just, I just want to thank all the teachers for all the work that they did, in addition to the administrators in the school and our, you know, our retired ELL, ELL Director. It was, it definitely was a team effort, there was a lot of planning done and it was, it's just great, it was great to see everyone work collaboratively, collaboratively together, so thank you, everyone.
One thing that we also did, sorry, Sally, was just a professional development, I think, last fall, I don't know how many people went to the, was it the WIDA Conference in Providence?
Yeah.
So, there were, I don't know, a dozen, there were so many staff members who.
I think all the teachers were able to attend at least one day. Yeah, and a lot of, Becky also held several book studies, just to increase understanding and support for, again, anyone was able to participate, it wasn't limited to our ESL teachers.
Question, so the, the boilerplate that I've heard for years is that, you know, parents' interest kind of drops off as. Kids go through the grades, but that memorial number really seems to refute that, that the incredible gains that happened there at the middle school level are, you know, really impressive, so. Any, any comment about, you know, the, I guess, the breakthrough of engagement of the middle school memorial parents? I know, you know, again, they did have the, they did have the restructuring grant and the DESI, you know, assistance.
We did, Becky did start the LPAC last year, so that's the English Language Learner Parent Action Committee. So, we did have parents from across the district that were coming to that, all different grade levels and we also at least started our adult ESL class last year for parents, which was. So much interest in that and hope, hopefully, you know, just, I think it's just them seeing us trying to reach out, really trying to connect with them.
Great.
And I think across the district, we focused on improving school attendance, several of our schools the year before were dealing with chronic absenteeism and. I was reviewing some information with Brittany the other day and I think the year before, their chronic absenteeism number was around twenty percent and before, you know, we switched to the remote, remote learning model. In March, Memorial had reduced that number down to eight percent, so, the old saying that if the students aren't present, they can't learn was, was certainly true and I know. Their team, along with support from the School Resource Officer, their guidance team worked very hard to make sure students were coming to school and meeting their needs, so. It, it's more than, you know, ELL, although ELL is making the presentation tonight and that's where the full team approach comes into play.
This, this is Jim, I have a comment and a question, first of all, I want to congratulate the teachers and the staff, congratulate the parents and especially congratulate the students for. Doing so well, it truly was a team effort and it's obvious when everybody works together, success is. Is a result, Eva, you said that the, the access testing took place in January. And then everything kind of shut down in, in beginning of March. Was there, were, were you contin, were you able to continue to do ELL teaching, training remotely during the, the last half of the, the last quarter of the year?
So, I know the ESL teachers worked with the classroom teachers during that remote time in the spring. I also know, you know, we continued some professional development in the form of book studies.
Okay.
And right now, we're meeting with all of the teachers, school by school, with ESL teachers to look at the scores, not only for the FLAP kids, but to see what concerns they have for other students. And make plans for this year coming and a lot of them were using some data points that we had before the closure to talk about kids and to see what they need, you know, going forward for this year.
Thank you.
So, they're, they're still in the game, I guess.
Okay, oh, thanks again, well done, well done.
Oh, yep, Jean. Yeah, I want to say congratulations too, that's awesome, that's wonderful, you, you work so hard, Eva, and I, and all the teachers and kids and staff. So, it's really nice to see that payoff, right?
Yeah, and Becky, and Becky, don't forget Becky.
I know, I, I, I don't, do you think Becky's watching right now?
She is watching, yeah, she is.
Because that is such, this is the evidence, right, of all that hard work, so, that's awesome. And now Becky, you're retired, so you probably shouldn't watch them anymore. But I am curious about, so, are we, I have two questions, are we running? The adult ESL class this year and that forty percent figure of kindergarteners being English learners? How does that compare to where we've been historically?
So, yeah, so, okay, so usually, we try to screen students before school starts. Because anyone, the process is that when they fill out an enrollment packet, they fill out a home language survey, Jean, and if any language other than English shows up on that survey, we have to refer them for a screening. So, that process hasn't happened yet, we're planning, as you saw in Bob's updates. Getting that done be, starting September fourteenth, where the students can go in one at a time and be tested, so that number may fall, but that's how many students. Have another language being spoken at home and, you know, a lot of those students do end up qualifying for ESL services. But I don't, I don't have specific statistics from previous years, I didn't prepare that for tonight, I can get back to you on that.
Yeah, I'm just curious because I'd love to know that if, you know, how soon students maybe. Reach that FLAP if they're in our, if they're in the district young, right, like, so, I'm just curious about that, but then what about the adult ESL class?
So, I haven't talked, excuse me, to John about that, but I, I would love to see that, I think the community really, what do you think, John, do you think that might be a possibility if we ever get back?
Yeah, when, did we end up finishing all the sessions or?
No, no, no.
Yeah, so we probably need to re, re-engage the people who were, you know, taking part in it before to see where, if they're interested. But yeah, we can definitely possibly even look at maybe doing it virtually too, so.
Yeah, that would be, yeah.
I, I bet a lot of people would benefit from that, you know?
They were grow, I've never met a group so interested in learning, it was so rewarding as, like, teaching that, I just, it was amazing, really. So wanting to learn, yep. It's great.
I just wanted to quickly echo what everyone else has already said and just congratulations, this is really impressive. With, with the obstacles of this school year coming up, do we expect, I don't even know if you can, but do, do we expect these results to continue for two thousand twenty and twenty one?
I'm sorry, hey, could you just report the, the last part of your question?
Do we expect the same kind of progress, the difference between two thousand twenty and twenty one, even with all the obstacles with this school year coming up?
I think it's quite possible, I, I'm hoping, yep, that we, we continue the supports, I don't know if anyone else wants to weigh in on their speculation for that. No one? No one? Adam, John? No one's gonna back me up?
I would say that we can expect similar progress towards state average, but I don't know if it would be realistic to say we would have the same percentage increase over what we did last year. So access testing last year was not affected by COVID at all. The testing was done before March. So, you know, I would, I would say that we could be still a percentage above what state average may be, but I think it might be a stretch to say that we would have similar results being remote for the, for a period of time this year.
Makes sense. Thank you. Thanks again.
And one of the things that we're going to do right away too, is start, as soon as we can, start bringing students in to test them. As soon as we're able to have, you know, as soon as school starts on September 14th, we got to start looking at bringing kids back in so we can test them to see where they're at. So that's one of the first goals that we have as a district. So that's, that's going to happen soon. Go ahead.
Posing such a valuable member of your team as Becky, not only was she outstanding as a but she was a wonderful teacher for our system for many years. Are there any plans to try and replace her?
We're working on that right now.
Okay.
Am I unmuted now? Can you hear me now? Eva, there was a group that was formed. I don't recall their name, but there was, there were a group of adults specifically interested in Pittsburgh education. Do you recall that team?
The Public Education Stewards?
Yes. Did they have any role to play in this?
So they did participate in the English Language Parent Advisory Council. And we still have some of them, some of them worked in the district already. One of them is a para at McKay Arts Academy and she did some outreach this summer with our McKinney Vento families, kind of checking in and seeing, checking in on people. So we're trying to still involve them. We had a community event in August, August 6th, a drive-by resources for parents. And she really spearheaded that, got some donations from different organizations in the city. And she's planning another one for September 10th. That was posted today, I think on our Facebook page chat, was that flyer posted today. So she, she's still very active with us and Francisco is currently, he's with New View and he's running a public education stewards for special education students. And I know Alicia Baroski was presenting at that group a couple times this August. And that'll wrap up in September. So we do plan to continue to collaborate with them, yes.
Thank you.
Are we good?
Thank you, Eva.
Thank you, Eva.
Yep.
Thank you.
So moving on, it's now time for Athletic Director Craig Antassi to provide the school committee and the community an update on where things are at in the world of athletics in this new environment that we're all living in, working through, and also the action item that's on the tonight's agenda. So Craig?
Thank you very much, Mr. Jokola. Hello, everyone. How are you?
Good.
Wonderful. Okay, so I'm going to grab the screen here in a second and run you through a quick presentation on where we're at, kind of the state of athletics in the city of Pittsburgh. And then the focus of this slide presentation is to eventually get to that action item at the end. We're looking, or the school department and specifically the athletic department is seeking your approval to participate in fall athletics in the 2020 school year. So without further ado, I'll just grab the screen. And I'm pretty sure you can all see that now. Am I correct? Wonderful. Okay. So let's, let's take it from here as it loads. So when we left school on March 13th last year, that was our last day in the building here at Pittsburgh High School, that was exactly three days before the start of our spring sports season. Sadly, that never transpired. We met delay upon delay. Effectively, as more information came in, everybody was kind of looking for some solid ground to stand on and it just kept turning into quicksand. And before we knew it, we were stuck in this, this puddle of quicksand that it seemed like there was no escape from. On the screen there, you can see I've got some acronyms listed across the bottom. The first acronym you see, the EEA, that is the Executive Office of Energy and Affairs. The state office had issued some guidelines for us. That was like the first solid ground that we could stand on. On August 13th, they came out with some guidelines for us and that started us down this roadmap that you can kind of see there. And we're really at the fourth stage, that FPS stage, where I'm going to be, again, presenting to you, the school committee, so we can, you know, get your approval moving forward. The fifth stage there would be actually participating in fall one athletics, okay? So up here on the screen, you can see the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. They issued youth, adult, youth and adult amateur sports guidance. It was amended on August 13th, 2020 and took effect on August 17th. This is the office that really has governed any sporting venture in the state of Massachusetts since we fell into this COVID hole. It governs youth sports, all youth leagues in the state, and does govern the interscholastic sports as we plan and moving forward here. On that date, they came up with risk level of sports. On the screen, you can see we have three risk tiers. We have the green risk tier, which is lower. We have the yellow risk tier, which is moderate, and we have the higher risk tier, which is in red. I've gone ahead and I've underlined and bolded the offerings that we have right now in the city of Pittsburgh that meet those risk tiers. You can see we have tennis, disc golf, golf, and cross country. And that lower risk tier, baseball, softball, track and field, volleyball, field hockey, girls lacrosse, and soccer in the moderate risk tier. And then in the highest risk tier, we have the traditional fall sport of football. We have our winter sport of basketball, boys lacrosse, ice hockey, and competitive cheer. Okay, the state went through, they used a an appendix, like a flow chart, an algorithm, so to speak, to determine where each sport fell in each risk tier. If a sport was deemed as lower risk, they were enabled for level four of play. And you can see the levels on the left side of the screen there. There are four levels of competition. Level four would be your traditional MIAA tournament, should we have it. Level one would be our probably most basic level of participation, and that's individual or socially distanced group activities, non-contact workouts, aerobic conditioning, individual skill work, and drills. Now you can see two and three exist in between those two maxims. And it's really a broad spectrum of what could be available in two or three. In order to participate in levels two or three play, we're going to need to meet these minimum mandatory standards for modification that the EEA outlined. Now I've stripped those modifications out of this presentation today because they're expansive. I felt it was, you're better served right now for me to tell you that we're addressing this at the district and league level. I just was on the call earlier today with the other 25 schools in the Midland-Watson League, which is our local league, discussing these protocols ranging from transportation to sportsmanship. And we're working really hard to figure out what athletics looks like, meeting these minimum standards. And if you have some questions about that, at the end, I'll be happy to answer that for you. If August 17th was the EEA guidelines, that was our first solid ground we stood on. On August 18th, DESI and the MIAA made a joint statement about interscholastic sports in the 2020, 2021 school year. And I pulled out the key takeaways for you here, and this is probably the most important one that I want to stress right now. DESI believes that sports can be an important part of a well-rounded educational experience, even during a public health crisis. Right? That it goes without saying, the important role that extracurriculars play and I guess building a bridge between the school department and the students and families that engage with the school department. This was not lost on DESI and that's why DESI and the MI got together to express really how important it is that we provide these opportunities for our youth. The second key takeaway is the COVID-19, in the COVID-19 world, the Department of Public Health's health metric map that is updated weekly, I believe it's on Wednesdays, is going to be used to govern ongoing participation in athletics. The general rule of thumb is if at any time a community moves into the red, the red designation, then we would go into a full remote model. And then at that point, that also means athletics, all athletic events would be canceled. Right now we're green. I just checked it before the meeting, which would mean that we are fully cleared to participate in those interscholastic sports and levels two and, two and three play. The last takeaway was the MIAA said that there are going to be sports that are going to have trouble meeting these minimum modifications to play in this COVID world. So rather than cancel a season entirely, like happened to our spring sports season, they've divided the traditional three sports of, or three seasons of fall, winter, and spring into four seasons and created a floating season called Fall Two that we're going to move any displaced sports into as we move through the year. DESI has given, or the MIAA has given wide leeway here to school districts to move any sport into Fall Two that they deem necessary. Right now, when this came out, the MIAA did say that football in its high-risk tier would fall into that floated in season, as would competitive cheer, where the cheerleaders are right on top of one another, and unified basketball from our fall season. Basketball, cheerleading, and football, all are high-risk designation sports because they have deliberate contact as part of the sport. It's not, safe might not be the word, it's not endorsed by the MIAA, the DPH and DESI as being a sport that can participate in interscholastic competition right now. The winter Fall Two floating season and spring season, you can see I've listed the sports that are participating in those seasons. On this slide here, it really depends upon the individual districts, what sports are offered. Our school is a member of the Midland-Watson League. Being a member of the Midland-Watson League, we're governed by the MIAA District Three Athletic Committee. And what we've seeked to do is create a geographic pod model for play. The benefit of a geographic pod model for play would be that we would minimize the amount of inner-school travel that we would expose our community to. We have presented this model locally within our district and then also expanded it out across the state. I had the opportunity to speak to some urban athletic directors from Eastern Mass today about this particular model. They very much like this, is akin to the old backyard model where neighborhoods would play against one another and move around and play each other. So in this geographic pod model, as it was initially conceived, you can see some of the pods that were proposed. Now I put proposed here because every school district has the opportunity to opt in or out. The schools that are in yellow are our local league schools. These are the schools that we compete against in athletics as far for league championships, but our principals also work closely to one, with one another, meet monthly and discuss many problems or many issues that pertain to, you know, kind of our local communities. As you can see, we would be listed in Pod Six under this proposed model. We would compete with Monty Tech, St. Bernard, Sizer, Pittsburgh, Lunenburg, and Lemonster. Like I said, we would really minimize travel around the state and try to keep it in that backyard competition model. Now, we have until 9/3 to opt out of the Fall One season. That was a date that was given by the District Athletic Committee for any one of these schools that you see on the screen here to opt out so we could then pursue making schedules. Every school in the yellow that you see there, as of right now, has opted into the fall season, though they're in our league and we're very confident that we can create a safe and really compliant environment that's going to be a value add for our district. The schools in the white, they're outside of our league and I can tell you that many of them, many of them have chosen to move sports into Fall Season Two because they don't have the great cooperation and collaboration that we have in the Midland-Watson League. Our sister community Lemonster on 8/31 was posed the same question that I'm posing to you tonight. And they approved play for their very remote learners. I can tell you that Monty Tech has opted out of this geographic pod for the fall season, so we would not be competing with Monty Tech and in our pod we would replace with, you know, someone nearby. Overall, here are the sports that are being offered throughout the year. This is kind of a community FYI. Here's how the seasons break down by date. You can see right now, the floating season stands out in February, from late February to the end of April. It's going to be really, really cold weather. And it's going to be interesting if we're able to play football in that scenario, where we play football and we've been, I've had discussions with the game on facility up in West Pittsburgh about potentially hosting football games up there on their turf to make it possible for us. In the near term, in, for the fall sports that we're looking at with boys and girls cross-country, golf, field hockey, and boys and girls soccer, the plan would be to utilize local facilities that would allow us to obey the in-person limits that have been put upon us by the Department of Public Health. That's 50 people, 50 persons attending an outdoor gathering. For boys and girls soccer, I would anticipate us playing those games at Crocker Field inside the confines gates so we can limit attendance at all times. Field hockey is still TBD where we're going to play that, although I am exploring a partnership with the West Pittsburgh Facility Game On to move their games up onto the turf up there. Golf, we're still exploring where we can play. Oak Hill is our traditional location. But due to the ongoing pandemic, we're still waiting for approval from their board to play golf up there. And boys and girls cross-country will continue to be hosted by Hall of Hills as far as I know at this time. Competitions would be, would begin on 10/5, October 5th, and would end no later than November 20th for the fall sports season. Now this is attacking only the Fall One season for interscholastic play, right? So those are the sports that are being governed by that. I was on a call this morning, again, with District Three and league level officials to develop protocols. And we're targeting a release of a comprehensive pamphlet of these protocols for the public on 9/20. After this presentation here, I have a fairly comprehensive, a long-form version of this slide presentation that I'll post up to fitchburgathletics.com so the community can review some of the sport-specific modifications that will impact their sports. And really that takes us, that is the state of athletics at this point. And that kind of takes us to the action item, which is the specific request that I have this evening is that the committee would approve the recommendation that all learners of all cohorts, both hybrid and remote, be cleared to participate in the MIAA slash DESI-approved interscholastic sports in 2020, 2021. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions on any facet of this, this topic. Yeah, Jean, go ahead.
So I have a couple of questions and I had asked this in the student support subcommittee. Can you talk about what would happen with transportation and whether parents or, you know, anybody could dropped off on their own to these events and, you know, picked up from these events? And then what does this do for the whole idea of cohorts? So if, I mean, understandably, this is outside. Everything that you've listed is outside. So I really do believe that changes a lot in my own mind about this. But what, once kids do go back if we are in a hybrid model, what does that do for the whole cohort idea?
It's a fantastic question, Jean. And by general dates here, looking at where we would begin our hybrid or in-person learning in our school buildings, I believe the date that was just put out there was November 5th. We would look to end our participation no later than that first, really that second week in November. 11/20 is for makeup dates, depending upon rain. I would imagine as we get closer to November, we'll be able to make a more informed decision about- I would imagine as we get closer to November, we'll be able to make a more informed decision about where we're at in our local community. And if need be at that point, if we felt that there was going to be inter-cohort mixing that we didn't want, we could always cap the season at that point. Many of the moderate-risk sports, so Boys and Girls Soccer and Field Hockey, when they are participating on the field and anything that may bring them in contact with one another, they'll be practicing in a cohort model, which will allow us to kind of keep them separated and contact trace, right?
Can you explain that again? I, I, they'll be practicing in a cohort model?
Yeah, so if I can clarify, um, when students are not able to adequately meet the minimum modifications as outlined by EEA, the EEA. So if there was an event, i- it, if there was a situation where students could not be separated and abide by the modification guidelines uh, for the sport, so soccer for instance, one of the key modifications is there is no touching of the ball by hand. Okay, there's no touching of the ball by hand. There is also no deliberate contact. So when we're practicing on the soccer field and it's light practice, we're able to have more students in a cohort because they're spaced, right? We can have up to twenty-five on the field. If we had to do something that's more uh, game-driven, right? So intrasquad, we would cohort that, we'd break it down to ten, no more than ten students, right? Because now we're, we're, we're not looking for deliberate contact, but it may come into play. Um, so in the practice settings, now we're going to limit that group to ten uh, players. So again, we're kind of locking down on the number of interactions that we're having between any of our students at any given time outside of the game environments where it's kind of difficult to avoid. Does that make sense?
And this is, and this is for all of our sports, so middle school sports too?
So mid, the Midland-Watson League has voted not to supply a middle school sports schedule for this year. The reason that we have gone, that decision was made is the oversight necessary to ensure compliance um, on each one of these fields. There, there has to be a COVID administrator in each field. We didn't feel we were going to be able to adequately meet those guidelines if we spread uh, across all of those middle school engagements as well. Because of that, it wa- it was supported, and again, this is a school-by-school decision, but we have in the Midland-Watson League, schools that range from very large facilities with lots of resources to very small schools with very few resources. And we didn't think it was appropriate to um, really kind of create a, a, a situation where, of the haves and the have-nots in that way. So we just made a blanket statement to, to create the minimum um, effectively a sports season that we knew we could do well, Jean, right? Instead of trying to do too much and do, and not do it well and have it fail, we tried to create a model that we knew we could, we could do successfully.
And then the transportation?
Yeah, so the transportation piece, that is a subcommittee that I'm actually sitting on. We're looking to explore the option of allowing parental transport when it made sense, right? But again, every school district has different policies regarding parental transport. So um, as of right now, we're coming up with those recommendations that we could again revisit um, when, when they come out with central office staff to gauge their comfort, their comfort level with potentially allowing parental transport to games. Um, one key aspect that we're looking at is um, specing out a seventy-seven person bus, which would allow us twenty-three travel participants for away games. Uh, because of that, we will have roster caps on travels, uh, we'll have travel roster caps uh, in order to again, ensure a safe and compliant environment. So, long answer to the short question, um, we're going to have to revisit parental transport going forward here.
Hey, Craig. Hey, so thank you so much for the presentation. I really appreciate it. Um, I just have one question. In the beginning, you know, you mentioned the, the extensive guidelines for all the different sports. And when you mentioned that soccer has got to have, you know, they can't touch the ball anymore. You know, that just kind of illustrates, I'm sure there's going to be a lot of modifications to, to pretty much every sport. But with, like as you said, the extensive guidelines, you know, in our, in our previous school committee um, meeting, we had an extensive conversation just about um, the actual materials, you know, the PPE and the personnel to, to meet all the guidelines. Do you feel confident that, that we have those materials to, to meet all those goals, wh- when it comes to PPE personnel or otherwise?
Yeah, I, I feel very confident about that actually. The district here has been very supportive in providing PPE to all the buildings to ensure a safe and compliant environment. And then where athletics is really just a uh, an extension of the traditional school day. You know, I, I'm going to, I feel very confident in providing providing an atmosphere that, that is right in line with what the school district and central office is planning for all of our students and staff as they enter buildings. Um, one of the really important things that we have um, set out to meet in order to offer athletics is we have to have a COVID administrator at all games. So whether it's myself, um, our current trainer, Sash EMT, Alan Toomley, who is actually, he'll become our COVID czar for this uh, this fall. I'm confident that we'll be able to do that, Aiden. We're really limiting the number of contests that are going on. To Jean's point, there'll be no middle school sports. We can really focus on the local facilities that we have in operation in that day.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I, and I guess, you know, the reasons for the question are obvious, but uh, with everything, you know, with the pandemic going on, it does seem like sports is, you know, it's even more of a luxury and, and kind of a privilege in some sense. But the thing I, I think the most about throughout this presentation was just the social interaction that the kids are going to get out of it. And being, feeling on a team again, getting out of their house and being active, I just think the, the benefits of all that. It can't just be looked at as some simple, I, I'm sure a lot of parents and a lot of people might look at this as kind of a, of a luxury to be participating in sports when we're going back to school. But when I'm thinking about that part of it, you know, I think it's a lot more, I just, I hope people look at this as a very practical decision to continue with sports and, you know, the emotional impact that it's going to have on a lot of students, so. So thanks a lot. I appreciate it and I think I'll be supporting this.
Yeah, thanks. And to that point, I mean, we're looking to provide a bridge, right? We're looking to rebuild that bridge between um, the physical structure of the school to, to our, our community that's really kind of virtual right now.
Rosemary here?
Hi, Rosemary.
I'm really, really happy and, and pleased with your presentation. Sounds great to me. Just refresh my mind, please. Is basketball not included?
Correct.
Or was, it, it's not included because of the passing and all of that?
Correct. I think right now, uh, basketball qualifies as a high-risk sport because there is a lot of contact and, and close physical interaction. And it's played indoors. I think that's probably the key point. It's indoors. Right now, we're building a model where we're taking it one season at a time. So the Fall One outdoor season seems to make a lot of sense and it seems to be a good starting point and then we can build from there.
Right. And uh, what classification was it for baseball?
Baseball is a moderate-risk sport, but we're currently playing uh, youth baseball in areas all around the state. So uh, if the situation is the same in the spring as it is right now, Rosemary, I'd anticipate us playing baseball as well.
Okay, good job. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I make a motion to uh, take twenty-one oh oh six out of order so that Mr. Antashi could uh, move with this?
Before you motion that, I just have a couple more questions.
Ms. LaBelle Pierce, uh, go ahead with your questions.
And so the, there's very little um, information. I know that Craig was looking for it and, and I was looking for it on um, statistics from the summer sports, because, you know, we've all seen these activities kind of going on and um, I just, maybe it's not really a question as much as a comment before anybody would vote. Maybe Craig, you could speak to the data collection and the rules system that I, I, again, I've been kind of shocked that I can't really find um, where they've been accounting for attendance or any issues of infection. I mean, no news is good news, right? Like, so I guess that's true. I, we know that there have been some out-of-state youth sport activities like hockey that have led to COVID spreads. But the sense is that like, some of these events have been going on the summer and, and it's been okay, but you really can't find data to support that. I think, again, I don't know Craig, if you want to speak to that, um, but I think that that's important for people to know and, and a, a question I do have is what would the different um, parent? Because this is volunteer, you don't have to do this, right? Like, so what would parents be signing if they're registering their kids? Like, how is that a different process from years past?
That, great question. Um, so first I'll take the, the lack of data from youth sports. Just specifically, uh, there's a clear, I need to state that youth sports and interscholastic sports or school-sponsored sports are two vastly different animals. The youth sports, although they, they are core, hopefully coordinating with the Board of Health, local Boards of Health um, to pull permits for field use, are not required to report out the attendance-taking that they do or any type of contact tracing that is done within that local league, right? It's kind of managed inside of the league itself. For us as part of a school system, um, there are guidelines that have been put out before us where we have to have our students, self-cert, students and coaches self-certify before coming to the facility every day that they do not have um, any symptoms, that they are COVID-free, that they have not been exposed to COVID. And that's data that we're going to be tracking and then reporting on. All of our fans that may be in attendance at games will have fan passes that will be attached to families. Um, the, the discussion that was uh, ongoing this morning, uh, our plan is to have a QR code on the individual family passes, so as you enter a facility, you are scanned. We know who is there. We know the passes that are, that are available. Um, the discussion was also had that we will not allow uh, visiting teams to travel to our home loca- uh, visiting fans to travel to our home location, right? So we'll allow players onto the surface and coaches who have self-certified, but we are not allowing outside community members into our venues. So these are just a couple of things, Jean, and again, it speaks to the lack of data that's out there. But at the end of the season, as it's tracked across the state, we should have some better info going into that indoor season. And then as far as the, whatever um, COVID documentation we're asking our families to sign as part of the registration process, that's a discussion that needs to be had at the central office level after any potential uh, yes vote from this committee here. I would hate to, you know, get, get too far up in front of myself. Okay?
Are there any limitations on our fans going to the games, Craig?
Um, we do, we are restricted by the, again, local Board of Health guidelines. The MIA and Desi have put out there that we can have effective, in a Crocker Field facility, um, this would be up to our Board of Health. They say no more than fifty people that are non-essential to the operation of the game. So we're allowing fifty people on the playing surface and then technically the MIA would allow fifty spectators. But that, Aiden, I see your face and I totally understand. This is something that's going to be an ongoing discussion with our local Board of Health and Steve Curry to see what those minimum guidelines are that we have to meet here. Because we're only going to do what's safe for the city and we're not going to expand about, expand beyond that, take liberties.
Good, yeah, because at the very least, you know, those, those fans that come would at least need to have to sign in or something, because if there was an infection, they need to be notified, right?
Yeah, correct. And that, the, every player, every participant will be given a pass. That is, that is local to their family. And when they come in, that pass is to be scanned. There's no entry without a very, the MIA pass that we're, we're um, efforting to get out there to families. So you won't be able to walk in off the street and, and catch a game. That is, is the idea.
We have a second, Mr. Mayor?
The second to, I seconded your proposal?
Motion to accept twenty-one zero zero six has been made and, and seconded individually. If we would call out the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Just one second, please. Mayor Dean Natale?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh? Oh, he's absent at the moment. Uh, Ms. Cregan?
Yes.
Ms. LaBelle Pierce? Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Horgan?
Yes.
We are unanimous?
Thank you. Moving on, Mr. Superintendent? Budget items? You're muted, Bob.
Thank you. So before we get to budget items, I, I guess first I would just ask Craig Antassi to stop. Thank you on the share. Thanks, Craig. Like, just have Craig Schell for our Director of Finance and Operations provide a brief summary of the uh, rationale for the uh, vote, the action item for the Crocker Elementary School MSBA. And then Craig will provide just a brief summary of the grants uh, submitted to you tonight to accept.
Thanks, Bob. Uh, as everyone's well aware, we have our MSBA core project for the new Crocker Elementary School, which is uh, full steam ahead at this point. We had a recent um, school building committee meeting that was hosted on FATV and available for the public to participate in. We have another one uh, slated for September eighth. That meeting will start at five o'clock. It will also be hosted on FATV and community members can sign up to take part in that. And I would encourage all of our community members to do so. I know that Mr. Bolak at Crocker has been doing quite a bit of outreach as well as Mr. Garner as far as um, advertising the opportunity for folks to be participants in these very important meetings around the Crocker Elementary School building. We do have an action item this evening. In the next phase of the, of the project is the PSR or the Preferred Schematic Report, which will be submitted to the MSBA next week. And in order for us to move forward with this, we're asking for an official motion uh, of the school committee this evening to authorize the site location for this new building, the Crocker Elementary School Building, to be at the location on two hundred Bigelow Road here in Fitchburg. And secondly, also approve and authorize that the um, grade configuration for the new Crocker Elementary School be grades one through five. And we ask for that to be a standalone uh, motion to be voted on so that we can include um, the specific notes in our submission to the MSBA.
By your motion?
So make the motion?
Second.
Motion made to accept twenty-one dash zero one. It was seconded, is that correct?
Yes.
Ms. Green, at least an individual vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Dean Natale?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh is not here. Uh, Ms. Cregan? Is Ms. Cregan here?
Yeah.
Yep, yes.
Okay, great. Um, Ms. LaBelle Pierce?
Yeah.
Thank you. Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Horgan?
Yes.
Yes, unanimous.
Thank you. Moving on, is you going to continue, Craig?
I will. We have uh, four grants to be accepted this evening. Um, the Esser Grant or the, the CARES Act Grant, what we have been discussing quite a bit this uh, little last month or so. That was submitted and uh, for two point um, three million dollars. We're looking to accept that and that is for, to be used for um, PPE and other needs of the district to prepare for the reopening under the uh, COVID guidelines. We have our Remote Learning Technology Essentials Grant, which Ms. Eileen Spinney submitted. Um, and we're looking to accept that at three hundred and thirty-five thousand one hundred and six dollars. And that's to be used for technology, uh, for our remote learning um, opportunities to promote access for all families. Uh, we also have a Twenty-First Century Community Learning Centers Grant, uh, five hundred and fifty-nine, three, three hundred and thirty-four dollars. It's uh, to continue with our Twenty-First Century After-School Programs, the uh, exemplary It's to continue with our Twenty First Century After School Programs, the exemplary programs grant. And then finally, we have our FY twenty-one McKinney Vento Homeless Education Grant for twenty thousand dollars. And that's to provide and to ensure our homeless students are enrolled in school and have opportunities to succeed.
Thank you, Mr. Schall. Any questions? What is the wish of the committee? Do we wish to bundle these items or take them individually? Bundle. Action item twenty-one dash zero two up through and including twenty-one dash zero five. Do I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion to accept.
Motion made and seconded. Ms. Greenlee, would you have a count, a, a vote count, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Mayor Dean Natale. Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Ms. Cregan.
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle Pierce.
Yeah.
Mrs. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Horgan.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you, committee members. Moving on, I believe there's a need for executive session for the purpose of negotiations. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion for executive session?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Again.
Hi, everyone. See you.
Yes.
Hi.
Hi.
Oh, you're leaving, okay. Ms. Greenlee, would you take an individual vote on that, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Dean Natale.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Ms. Cregan. Thank you.
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle Pierce.
Yeah.
Mrs. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Horgan.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh has, has returned. Yes? Okay.
You're muted, Jim.
He's muted, but he nodded. I'm assuming, I'm assuming the nod is a yes.
I, I just got on, so I'm not even sure what the motion was, so probably would be better if I abstained on this particular vote, not knowing what it was, so.
All right, I'll make, I'll make a note.
All right, thank you.
Executive session, Jim. To executive session.
That is a yes. Thank you.
I'll remove the abstain. Then we are unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you, committee members. We'll, we'll go into executive session for the purpose of negotiations and to return only for adjournment.